Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 7, 2022. I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss YCT contractual negotiations under the Taylor Law.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District. Oh, wait. Before I read that, I'm going to say this. New York State mask mandate is still in place for schools, and the mandate requires that any person over the age of two, including all students, personnel, teachers, administrators, contractors, and visitors, are to wear a mask while in public school buildings. The mask must completely cover your nose and your mouth, and if you do not wear a mask, you will be asked to leave our meeting and our school building. Please wear your mask properly at all times. So can we please, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 7, 2022. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially remember the father-in-law of Daniela Salmon and retired CTA Linda Nicolosi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to start with our first public comment. Before I invite the speaker up, I just want to read something. Our first public comment session is 15 minutes in length. Each person has the opportunity to speak up to three minutes about topics that are on tonight's agenda. We will not be extending our public comment period for the first period. So although the state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. The speakers were asked to sign up in the appropriate signup sheet with their name, address, and email. If your name is not legible enough that we can read it, you will not be called. Please address all comments directly to the board, not to the audience. Our policy 2012-30, public participation at board meetings, clearly states that we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of an individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up the right to continue to speak. All speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn the microphone off. Thank you. Our public comment on agenda-related items, I'm going to call Lawrence Killian.
My name is Lawrence Killian, and with my wife and kids, we moved to the Yorktown District in 1990. We're also members of Yorktown 100, which is a group of volunteers who are trying to reduce carbon emissions by 5% a year. So I'd like to talk about transportation and what kind of buses we use. The transportation budget has $165,000 for 57,000 gallons of diesel fuel. Instead, imagine using electricity that came from solar panels on the roofs of our building that we would get at very little cost because we were generating our own electricity. And also think of the, of our environment and our kids on the buses with the use of all that diesel fuel. Recent articles in the Yorktown News and Westchester Examiner about the efforts of other school districts, the Tarrytowns, Croton, White Plains, for example, to set up pilot electric bus programs prompts us to ask what Yorktown is doing in this area. As we know, electric buses are more energy efficient, their batteries recharge when they brake and slow down, electric motors are three times more efficient than combustion engines, they are much less expensive to maintain, and they last longer. There's an organization in Croton, like our Yorktown 100, that's called Cure 100, and has developed a user-friendly tool called BEST Bus Electrification for School Transportation, which allows districts to determine total cost of a bus and even goes into generating estimates of tax levy per household. So there's federal infrastructure money, there's state grants and proposed legislation.
10 seconds.
So this would be a time to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. There were no other public comments or agenda-related items. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's great to see you all here this evening. So my updates will consist of a few items. This evening, we'll also be giving the second installment in our series of budget presentations on debt service and transportation. We'll outline some of the items that certainly go into the cost. All of the presentations in our budget series are posted to our website, so they're accessible to members of our community. With regard to the updates that I'm going to provide to you tonight, I'll start with today's weather. There was some snow. I received some inquiries. Why don't we have a snow day, Dr. Hatter? I really wanted a snow day. I saw the flakes coming down. It doesn't work that way. If we can safely get the buses around town, and we believe that we could safely get the buses around town, we open schools, and that's what we did this morning. There were no incidents that were reported to us with regard to the buses. And one thing you'll learn tonight, if you hadn't already been aware of this, our buses are on the road for about six hours a day. We have a four-tier transportation system. So we start with the high school. Our first buses are out of the yard just before 6:00 a.m. each day for the first pickup at about 6:20 a.m. So our decision comes at 5:00 a.m., and I would love to know at 9:00 o'clock what I know at later in the day, but unfortunately, that's not the way things work when it comes to a snow call. We have used four snow days to date. We have one more snow day that is built in, so the next closure, I hope there isn't another closure, but the next closure will be our fifth and final snow day. And then from there, we would pivot to remote learning because the alternative would be to go into one of the school recess periods, and we respect that families have made plans and there are arrangements that are in place, so we would pivot to remote learning in those instances. So we've used four. We have one more snow day remaining, and I'm hopeful that we don't have to use it, but I'm a realist. It's February in the Northeast, and so the possibility always exists. But please know that any decision that we make, and I speak to Mr. Cole at 4:00 a.m. every morning, even tomorrow morning, I'll be out in my car at 4:30 to assess the icy patches, just to make sure that the campuses are safe for our children. So 4:30, if you happen to be in the neighborhood, you can stop by and say hello. I'll be here. With regard to the decision, please know that I'm not looking at how many snow days are available when I make a decision on a snow day. It's in that day, is it safe that day for our children and staff? And that's a determination, and there are a lot of factors. We have, our high school drivers are out on the road. The sun's not quite up at that point. That I'm mindful of. And then children waiting at bus stops. So those are all of, and obviously, the roads and the campus conditions. With regard to just next steps, reopening, opening up, back up, there's been a lot of conversation about masks. I'll address that this evening as well. This weekend, Saturday night, we had 500 people in this auditorium watching a dance performance at our high school. How wonderful for our students to have that opportunity in front of a packed auditorium. So we continue to move forward. You're going to be hearing some announcements in the coming weeks with regard to more of that happening, and we're excited to continue to be able to provide those opportunities for our students and their families, certainly. With regard to masks, I just want to share, there was a lot that transpired from our last meeting to now. There were court proceedings that happened. Right now, masks are required in New York State. It is anticipated that the mask requirement, that statewide, I just want to share, this is not a school district determination. The school district is, in fact, once the mask mandate is lifted, this board and I will be no longer requiring masks. They'll be optional, once the mask mandate in New York State has gone away. So that's our position. I have been speaking with the State Department of Health. We wrote a letter jointly, has a group of superintendents, to advocate for clear metrics, a clear date, at what point can we remove the masks. Some would say that we're at that point, we're past that point. I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you. So what I'm looking for, very clear, very clear guidelines. Last spring, we had the opportunity to remove the masks. We were given that by the governor at the time, and it was a school district's decision. You know the decision that we made. We removed the masks, and we had a great summer. It was optional. Some students wore it, some staff wore it, some did not, and that was okay, and that's terrific. So I anticipate a decision coming soon from the state. In fact, the governor, I think, today announced at a press conference that an update on masks would be coming on Wednesday from the governor's office. So that's my understanding. I'll be watching that very closely, and once the mandate's no longer required, it will no longer be required in Yorktown either. So I just wanted to clarify that piece as well. And the one thing I would ask of our community, for anyone who, in the audience and anyone viewing this, whatever decision a family makes, I would just ask that you be respectful of that decision. So the decision will be based on one's personal comfort, family circumstances, just, I would just ask that we all be respectful of the decision that one makes moving forward. And I will be sending out a letter to summarize what I just shared here tonight, and I will be asking that everyone just be respectful of whatever decision a family decides to make. There are, just because the masks may become optional, we're moving toward that. The numbers have vastly improved in Yorktown, and that's terrific. There are other mitigation measures, so I know some may hear the idea of a mask being optional, and that can either be welcome news or it can be concerning news based on your specific circumstances. I understand that. There are other mitigation measures that are in place. We have great ventilation systems in our schools. We have great daily disinfection. So those are some really strong mitigation measures that are in place. With regard to just continuing to move forward, just some great news for some of our students. Our Mildred Eastang Middle School First Lego League team finished in first place at their qualifying event. So the robot design, the presentation that they created, I had the opportunity and the honor to practice with them and to be one of their practice judges, and I'm just so proud of what our middle school students, the MESMS Visionaries is what they, what they are called, what their team name is. And they finished first, so they'll be moving on, and we are delighted for them. Our dance company, congratulations to members of our high school dance company, just a brilliant, brilliant performance, three performances. And it's challenging when you're prepared to present and dance on Friday, and then the superintendent calls and says, "School's closed and the performance is canceled." That's a difficult setback to overcome, and they did so so well, and I was so proud of them. Two brilliant performances on Saturday, a brilliant performance on Sunday, and I was just so proud for them, for their families, and for everyone who was able to participate in a great three shows. Also, our wrestling team has been doing phenomenally well. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge our wrestling team. I'm not going to name them by name, but I'm just so proud of the work that they're doing. We have a first-year coach here in the district who did wrestle here when he was a student in Yorktown, just doing a phenomenal job, really bringing a lot of prominence to the program. So we're pleased with our wrestling program. And so many other great things are happening. As I visit class to class, I'm seeing so many wonderful things in our schools, and our students are really engaged, and they're happy, and they're learning, and it's everything that you want for your own children, and you see that in the schools, and I'm just so pleased that the experience has been great in many regards, great in many regards. Finally, I'll close by sharing, you may have read, actually, there are two items I want to share. You may have read about developments that are happening in town. There's a lot of construction that's being considered and that's being proposed. As a school district, the position will always be, as students come to our schools, we will educate them. So I understand that there's one property, and we'll do so happily. I understand that one of the properties in town is proposed for 148 units, and then there are some other developments that are being considered as well, in various stages of development, and the town has been terrific in their communication with us. We have such a great partnership with the town, with the highway department, the police department. Everyone works so well together, so we've been provided some really important information, information that is publicly available at the town meetings. We're looking at enrollment and capacity because some of the questions that we have is, with 400 units being developed, how many students will result from the development? So that's something that we have to have an eye toward the future on because, depending on what the next steps are, and we don't have those clearly defined at this point, although we are working with a demographer, we're working with specialists in this area to assist us in the planning, how many students will result from 408 units being developed, or 400 units being developed? One number that I've heard at a recent town meeting is in the 40s. So my estimate would be a little higher than 40 students with 400 units. However, we're deferring to people who know a lot more about enrollment projections and being able to forecast future enrollments as a result of housing developments. Finally, what I'll share is, there have been some library books that have been challenged and are under review, and I just want to share some information about that. There was a newspaper article recently written, I believe it was published on Friday of this past week, and it spoke to seven books that have been challenged in our high school. There is one book being challenged currently in the middle school. I just want to clarify because there seems to be some confusion that resulted from the article. Maybe the article wasn't fully clear in terms of where we are in our process. Right now, the books are under review. Board Policy 1420 and the Regulation 1420R speak very clearly to the process that follows when a formal complaint is initiated. So there are informal complaints where generally a conversation and context resolve, and then once we get to a formal complaint, there's a process that's prescribed by policy, and we're going through that policy. So the idea that books have been pulled from the library, that's not accurate. What has happened is generally, there are very few of each title. Generally, there's one of each title in the library. Step one of the process calls for the committee to read and review the book. So our committee has taken the book out of the library so that they can review it, and the book just can't be in two places at one time. So the book is with the committee. It is not available in the library right now, but I have had some concerns, well, how can you pull it? And there are Supreme Court cases that prevent the pulling of a book unilaterally, and I understand that, and I'm well-versed in the Pico v. Island Trees 1982 ruling. We're going through a process. We have a really great group of faculty and administrators who are reviewing the books. A determination hasn't been made yet, and once a determination is made, it'll be presented to me, and I will make a decision on that. And I will present the decision to the individual who initiated the complaint in the first place and share that with the board, and we'll share that publicly with you. But I just wanted to share with you where we are in the process because I think there have been some conclusions that have been formed, and the committee hasn't even finished their process at this point. I respect the process, and we're going to follow the process. So I just wanted to clarify that for members of our community. Are there any questions on anything that I shared this evening that maybe I should clarify?
No.
Okay. Very good. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to transition to the budget presentation for this evening?
Perfect.
Okay. So Mr. Cole will deliver the budget presentation that we have prepared for the board and for the community this evening, debt service and transportation. So Mr. Cole, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hacker, Hatter, and good evening, everyone. Tonight is our third presentation in a seven-part series. In the following slides, we will discuss the status of the district's outstanding debt and transportation services. We will begin with the debt service section of our budget. In 2021, the district's credit rating was affirmed at AA+ by Standard &amp; Poor's. The credit rating, one of the highest in New York State among S&amp;P-rated school districts, allows us to borrow money at very low interest rates. This chart represents annual total debt service payments, including related interest costs on our outstanding obligations. At this point, the bonds issued in support of the 2006 voter authorization represent the entirety of our capital indebtedness. As the chart indicates, our debt service costs will remain fairly constant for the next two years at a level of approximately $3.6 million annually. Beginning in the 24-25 school year, the outstanding debt begins to mature in six annual phases, phasing out completely after the 28-29 school year. Our capital reserve fund established by voters in May 2017 will again be the financial vehicle we use to fund capital projects for the 2022-23 school year. As a reminder, the voters approved a capital reserve not to exceed $12 million in total funding for a period not to exceed 10 years. The reserves have two significant benefits to taxpayers. It provides a source of funding for building and facility improvements without the need to further raise taxes and eliminates the interest expense on money that would otherwise have been borrowed. To date, we have fully funded the reserve to the maximum level of $12 million, and of that $12 million, approximately $11 million will have been spent by the end of the summer of '22. The next group of projects are scheduled to begin in the summer of 2022 and include lighting and air conditioning and other renovations in the cafeteria of the high school and air conditioning to large area spaces in the middle school, Brookside, Mohansick, and Crompon schools. Here is the line-by-line cost estimate for debt service in our budget. As the bonds issued in support of the 2006 authorization continue to be paid down, we can expect costs to remain constant for the next two years and then again dramatically decline over the next six years. Next, we'll move on to discuss transportation. The Yorktown Central School District employs a four-tier bus system, that is to say, we have four distinct cycles to our daily runs. In the mornings, the high school students are transported first, then the middle school students, Crompon School, and last, the two K3 schools, Brookside and Mohansick. In the afternoons, for dismissal, the cycle, the same cycle takes place. The four-tier cycle takes just over three hours to complete. We will utilize 71 vehicles of varying sizes to provide this service in 2022, 2023. The district provides home-to-school transportation to private schools for Yorktown Central School District residents within the distance requirements established by the State Education Department. We also provide transportation services to students attending special education programs outside of the school district boundaries. Our buses travel more than half a million miles each year, consuming more than 50,000 gallons of fuel. We expect total transportation costs to increase by just over $456,000. Our rate of contractual increase for 2022-23 is based on either the rate of inflation or 4%, whichever is lower. We are therefore estimating a 4% increase to CPI as the escalation factor for 22-23. The cost of diesel fuel will increase based on the significant rise in gas prices in general. In total, we expect transportation costs to increase by approximately 6.45%. Our next presentation will be the 28th of February, when we discuss the tax cap calculation, state aid, and district cash reserves. I thank you for your attention, and we'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Tom. I'm going to move to questions. First, appreciate all the work that you've done. We'll move on to questions. Cheryl, did you have a question?
I do. I have a question, Tom, regarding the outstanding debt. Have we refinanced all of the eligible outstanding debt that we currently have?
Yes, we have. Within the last three years, we refinanced the last two pieces of eligible debt, which saved taxpayers approximately $456,000 over the next several years.
Freshman?
Yeah. I know that this summer, as well as, you know, the last, every summer, right? We have a lot of projects that are slated, especially some of the bigger items that can be done over break or on a weekend. I think it'll be helpful, Tom, if you could walk us through, not us, and also the community, to the process of what it takes to get those slated for a given year, because it's one of the things that has the biggest lead time in terms of our budget.
Correct. And if I heard you correctly, because I can, it's difficult through the mask, you want to know what the process is to get those projects scheduled? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful for our community
Sure.
... to know what goes in to get a project slated for the summer of this year.
And I'll gladly do it, and both the superintendent and board president can weigh in on this. They're both members of the same committee that we've been working on, some of us now for about 22 years, which is the Steering Committee, which steers the capital projects through the district's maze of bureaucracy, if you will, at the state level. So projects that are identified, the school district has two sets of professionals for construction, the architectural team, for us, that's KSQ Architects, and our construction management team, because we are not allowed to let out a contract for a general contractor. School districts require the dissemination of contracts without a single general contractor that would typically subcontract all work, so we have to hire a construction manager. We happen to have the best, in my opinion, which is ours contracting. Once a project is identified, like the work that was done in the gymnasium, the team that is comprised of board members and administrators, for the most part here in the district, goes through the proposed specifications with the architect. It gets priced out by the construction manager. It gets sent up to SED for approval, which can take up to a year in some cases, and then the project comes back approved, and then we let it out to bid, and hopefully, the bids come in with the projected costs that we had from 12 months previous. It's a very long process, and it's a process that requires strategic thinking and looking ahead. And so when we get to these projects that we're about to do this coming summer, they were considered and drawn up last year, correct?
Year and a half, two years ago.
Two years ago, but we couldn't get them all into last summer, so half of those projects moved into this summer. Do you want to add anything to that process?
I would just say that the Steering Committee meets at least twice a month. When the projects are actually in, going on, which is usually from June through August, it's once a week. Sometimes it's, even now, we're going once a week because we're still working on colors and designs and things. It takes a lot of effort. It takes an entire team in this district, and our Director of Facilities sits on the committee. When we need to, we bring in the principals, we bring in other stakeholders. It's a whole-team effort in this district. Ron, is there anything you want?
No, and ultimately, it comes down to giving our students the facilities that they deserve to learn in. So I'll share the gymnasium, which we just finished this year, which we're so proud of. Section 1 has selected Yorktown as the venue for the basketball section championships. And for anyone who follows high school basketball, I think you recognize what a big deal that is, where the county center has always been synonymous with being the home of that really prestigious event, and now it's coming to Yorktown this year. So it's a result of the beautiful facility that the Steering Committee spent hundreds, or maybe even thousands of hours in design phase.
And we have to thank Tommy. He doesn't, usually toot his own horn, but it's because of his financial expertise and helping us, guide us through this, that we are able to manage the funds appropriately so that we can get the very best product for our students.
I do appreciate that, and I'm sure the community knows by now, after watching these meetings, that this is quite a collaborative effort between the board and the administration. The board allowed us several years ago to put up this capital reserve. We're pleased with its results, which has saved the taxpayers almost $2 million in interest expense, not having to borrow the money. So we're pleased. having to borrow the money. So we're pleased, and it's worked. I would say we'd all agree that it's outperformed our expectations, and hopefully it'll be used again in the future as a tool that can help to do really necessary work and do it in a way where it saves taxpayers a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation, Tom, as usual. Excellent. I have a question about our buses. I think we're all acutely aware of the rising fuel costs. So how do we calculate that into our assessment? And how are, I think we're also all aware of the labor shortage, and how is that playing into our transportation needs?
Okay. So why don't I take the second one first, because that'll be the shorter of the two. We have not had the same level of bus driver shortages as other school districts have had across the region. You hear horror stories across the region about the shortage of drivers. We did have a brief interruption with regard to COVID illnesses and things of that nature, but total transportation has really been wonderful at being able to staff the drivers for all of our buses, and we have not had that interruption, thank goodness. The, with regard to the diesel fuel, it's an interesting process. We have, our director or coordinator of transportation, Patty Sauber, is an expert at scheduling the buses and developing routes. She uses a software that plans out all the routes based on where students are located and at what grade levels. Based on those routes, we know what, how many miles we are going to travel. And then each type of bus has a state-determined miles-per-gallon usage of fuel. So we're only paying for the fuel that our buses are actually driving the routes that have been planned by Ms. Sauber. And that's how we get to the level that we have in the budget. All of the other miles that are in excess of that fall as a cost to the transportation provider. So for us, it's a very effective scenario. We will know upfront with 100% certainty what our mileage is going to be. The only variable that's not controllable is if we have to add a bus mid-year, and that will have a minor variation to the base projection. But for the most part, it's a pretty solid projection.
Thanks, Tom. You and your team are excellent.
Thanks.
Pete?
Tom, with regard to the fuel, there is a 6% increase with regards to fuel. Is there a way to hedge our fuel?
This is a, it's a great question, one that comes up a lot as part of our lobbying efforts, and the answer is no. We can't buy futures, future contracts to be able to do it. We do purchase off of the state contract, so we do get very effective pricing compared to the market rates. But we do not have the ability to go out and hedge against that inflation. We would love to be able to do that. There are a lot of things that we believe should be done in order to give school districts more financial dexterity. We like to be nimble here, but we can only be nimble within a certain box that we're put in, so.
I'm sticking onto the buses for a minute. We don't own our buses. We sub out to, contract out to Total Transportation. So we are not on a schedule where we can require them to purchase buses other than diesel fuel buses. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're operating on a base contract that stems back to the early 2000s. It's been extended over the years at rates of inflation, which has saved us a great deal of money. By exploring, going out into the marketplace for additional proposals, we believe that we are exposed ourselves to 20% increases in pricing. But the downside of that is, some of the language of the contract does not represent contemporary times, and that would be one of them. So this is, I believe we have next year and two more years on this contract, and that'll be a consideration for you all at that point, what to do and how to go about it. But currently, no. We do not have that ability to require the replacement of buses with different types of buses.
Have we had a conversation with Total about their viewpoint in 21st century buses?
Not, not in a broad sense, no. I don't believe they would have any problem with it as long as the infrastructure exists to support it, but that's an entirely different conversation.
And that's a whole infrastructure issue?
It is, and it's not without its, it's not without its considerations on the cost side either. Electricity costs are exploding at this point. They have been fairly consistent, but we're seeing a trend at massive increases in electricity prices, and so we're bracing for that right now.
Okay. Thank you. Cheryl, do you have more questions?
I do have another question. I see a line in one of the slides that talks about replacement cameras for buses. How are we going about evaluating when we're replacing them, or if technology is changing, or are we, you know, upgrading? What exactly is that referring to there?
We, at this point, the cameras are unusually reliable, as far as I'm concerned. Dr. Hatter, and I've had this conversation previously, we do want several cameras in inventory, but we do not, we do not have an issue where they're breaking down at a rapid rate or anything of that nature. So we're waiting for them to start to degrade, and we will have the ability to replace several of them as that happens. But at this point, there is no sign that any of the cameras that we have are in any way, shape, or form not performing up to standard.
So that's just an inventory?
Yes.
And not every bus at this point is outfitted, because there are some buses that are, one thing that Total has done is, they're not discussing alternate fuel buses with us at this point, but they are replenishing the fleet with newer buses. So as they sub out an older bus, they'll bring in a newer bus. If they have an older bus that they've inherited, they may make the determination that we're not going to invest the labor costs in outfitting the bus with four cameras. We're going to replace it in six months' time. We'll wait the six months, get the new bus, and then outfit that bus with the cameras. So not that that's necessarily for the cost, but that can also be for some of the other costs that go into the installation.
Thank you. Freshman?
I have a question on the interest payments. So they seem to go down every year, except in the last year. It seems to just go up just a bit. It seems to be the same as the 27, 28. Can you give us some insight into that?
Sure. The, each one of these, the chart of indebtedness that shows that significant decline over a six-year period represents an aggregate of all of the debt. Each piece of debt, and there can be up to, oh, I'm gonna estimate five or six individual pieces of debt that we've refinanced over a period of time, have different variables on the amortization schedule for the debt. So some of them have higher back-end costs with variable interest rates towards the end of, and that's why you see a blip up a little bit. In my estimation, I don't know that it's going to be material at all. It's a fixed cost. It's not as if we're going to be subjected to the exposure of higher interest rates six years from now. That's not the case. So these costs are fixed, and some of them are just more back-ended.
Thank you.
Lisa?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Pete?
I'm good.
Tom, can you just explain, you talked about a double A rating, plus rating. What does it take to achieve that in New York State?
So this is something that I'm gladly going to talk about, because I believe it's a, it's a real indication of the collaborative effort that I discussed before, because nobody does this in a vacuum. We have an outstanding financial team here. I just happen to be the lucky person out front who gets to talk about this stuff. And the collaboration we have at the board is part of this as well. School districts have to be able to demonstrate significant reserves, that they've been able to establish cash reserves for particular reasons, not just to have cash on hand for the sake of adding it on hand, but for specific potential exposures. So for instance, we have cash reserves that protect us against tax or shiari judgments, when people, when businesses challenge their tax exposure in the community and they win in the courts, we have to pay out immediately. It could be six years' worth of judgments they're looking at, but we have to pay within 30 days the total value of all six years' worth of exposure. And that's one reserve. We talked about the capital reserve, which reading agencies will look at and realize the benefit of, because we, as I said before, we have estimated that we've saved $1.8 million of taxpayer money by not going into the market to borrow money and have to pay interest on debt for 15 years. We also have reserves that protect us against spikes in pension cost systems, depending on the rate of contribution that's required by New York State. And then we have other reserves that are used to reduce the tax rate, so that we can moderate the tax rate so that you don't see tremendous spikes. All of those things were cited by Standard and Poor's. Standard and Poor's put us in the top 10 school districts in New York State that they rate with regard to our financial condition. And that's the culmination of a 20-year effort. So it's noteworthy, and I think it has tremendous value.
That's fantastic. Can you also, while you're on that, talk about the fiscal stress score that the state comptroller also does for school districts?
The comptroller does an annual stress test on school districts based on certain criteria, and it's published so that the entirety of the citizenry of New York can see the results. We have absolutely zero, zero points on the stress test. In other words, we're about as healthy as you can get.
And for that, we owe you a debt of gratitude for the 20-plus years you've worked in this district, because you have had significant efforts to do this for us and help us get here. So we truly appreciate all the expertise you've given us over those years.
On behalf of my team and everybody else up here, Dr. Hatter and Lisa included, I thank you.
Thank you. I have, Anthony is on. Does he have any questions?
No.
No questions. No questions. Okay. Did anybody else have any more questions on the presentation?
I just have a comment. Cheryl, will you can say some?
No.
Oh, okay. So I think, Tom, I know for many years, we all have looked forward to your 5:00 AM calls, you know, the snow calls, the early dismissals.
You've looked forward to it, yes.
So I think there's a critical piece of information in the slide that talks about the four-tier busing system, and that it takes several hours to complete.
Yes.
So can you give some insight to our community on how that weighs in when you have to think about, is everybody going to be home safe? And it's not just our students, but it's our staff, it's the bus drivers after they drop off the kids, and the buses. And so can you kind of walk us through what goes through your mind?
Absolutely, and I'll defer to Dr. Hatter as well. But Dr. Hatter is absolutely not kidding when he says that many days in the wintertime, we are speaking before 4:00 in the morning, based on even the potential for bad weather. So because the system is a four-tier system and requires, under ideal conditions, three hours to complete, if the first buses to accomplish the high school run in the morning are out of the bus yard before 6:00 AM, so Dr. Hatter is typically on a call at 4:30 in the morning with his superintendent colleagues in the region, and that's all after, already having spoken to me and perhaps Dave Paganelli, who is the town's highway director. And then we have to look into the future, and because our buses are on the road from about 6:00 AM till 9:00 AM, we have to take our best guess, based on the information we have, what conditions are going to be like over the course of that three-hour window. Dr. Hatter, would you say that's an accurate description?
Yes, I think it's quite an accurate description. And I shared some of this. Our buses drive 3,000 miles a day. I don't do that in three months. And our buses do 3,000 miles in one day, six hours a day. So three, Mr. Cole referenced, and yes, that is the voice that you hear at 5:00 AM. Mr. Cole referenced 6:00 to 9:00 AM, but also from about 1:00 to 4:00 PM, the buses are out on the road. And I can be seen many times standing outside of the high school at 1:41, because if those buses do not begin to roll at 1:42, the Brookside and Mohansick runs are going to be backed up, and now we have parents waiting at bus stops longer than they should be waiting, and the buses run late. I often say that a two-minute delay at the high school turns into a 30-minute delay on the last leg of the run, and that is accurate. And it's something that we try to stick to. But once you add inclement weather to the situation, it makes for such a challenge. And early dismissals are not something that we tend to be fans of. But in terms of the routing of the buses, six hours they're on the road, there's a lot that goes into making that decision. We speak, I speak to the highway superintendent, who is terrific. He takes my call at 4:45, 4:20 in the morning, 4:30, I'm on with my superintendent colleagues. 16 of us speak at 4:30 in the morning. In fact, we're speaking tomorrow morning, because there's refreezing. So I generally take that call while I'm on the road, driving through Bluetooth. But there's a lot that goes into it, and we have, in a good year, in a regular year, about 2,800 children scheduled to ride the bus on any one given day, and we have about 200 high school students on any one given day who are driving to the campus. So it's, and staff, certainly, who have to commute from communities north and south of Yorktown.
Thank you.
But I think the crucial question is, who's going to make the calls next year?
I think Tom's coming back with just the phone calls.
To be determined.
Did anybody else have any more questions? We're all good? So we have three more budget presentations before the superintendent presents the budget in full to the board. And then I want to remind everybody that on May 17 is our budget vote, which will be at the French Hill School. It's also the same day that we do the trustee elections. I just want everybody, remind everybody it's at French Hill, and please come out on May 17. We appreciate everything. Ron, did you have anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you so much.
All right. We're going to go on to the personnel agenda. I have three resolutions. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that resolutions A through C be approved. We have one that, be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the creation of an additional 1.0 FTE Personnel Assistant Title and the elimination of a 1.0 FTE Personnel Clerk Title effective February 8, 2022. Then be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the increase in the hourly rate to $17 effective February 8, 2022 for the following positions, substitute clericals and substitute cleaners. And then be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the superintendent to establish the following rate of pay for staff not under Department of Labor overtime rules for additional duties, and that is a chaperone at $30.59 an hour. Some move. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have the personnel agenda. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel. We have part-time and temporary appointments. We have graduate credits. Hang on, I gotta scroll through all of them. We have an extra duties additions to the substitute list, teaching assistants stipend change. We have our spring coaches and co-curricular for 2021-22, volunteer coaches, corrections, unpaid leave of absence, a resignation for the purpose of retirement. And under classified personnel, we have a permanent appointment after the probationary period and additions to the substitute list. Some move.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Ron, have all the coaching roles been filled for the spring?
At this point, yes. I believe that all of the positions have been filled.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under business office, we have resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves proposal amendment number one to the agreement with Critical Response Group not to exceed $989. Some move. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under special ed, we have a motion to approve the following placements as of February 2nd. Is it 2nd or the 7th?
7th.
February 7, 2022. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a settlement, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the settlement and release agreement in regard to student alt ID 007007059. And be it further resolved, superintendent of school, be authorized to execute such settlement and release agreement on behalf of the district. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And then we have gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept the following donation with gratitude. At the middle school, we have 90 gently-used yoga mats from Beth Bierko of Katona. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are up to board comments. Pete?
I'm good.
Lisa?
Thank you to Tom for the presentation. You always do such an amazing job. And Dr. Hatter, thank you for your comments at the beginning, clarifying some of the things that I think are weighing on everybody's minds with respect to the controversies, the masks, all of that. Thank all of you for coming out. It's so good to see everybody come out to a meeting and show your interest and support in the district. And I'll just reiterate Jackie's comments, that there is a vote in May, and please come out and exercise your right to vote. There are three board trustee positions up. Mine is one of them, so please, everyone, go out and vote.
Freshman?
Well, thank you, Tom, for such a thorough budget presentation, and also Dr. Hatter and Lisa. A huge shout-out to the middle school FLL team. During my early years on the board, I remember when we started the robotics team at the high school, and then a couple of years later, we started the middle school team. And to see that team, you know, take off and win first place in a very competitive qualifier was, you know, just outstanding. And I cannot wait to see how well they do at the regionals. So congratulations to them in half. They're absolutely fantastic. To add on to what Lisa Rol said, my seat is up as well in May. You know, I cannot wait to continue our collective work together. We have accomplished a lot, and there's so much more that we have on our mind.
Cheryl?
Yes, I want to say thank you as well to Tom for, you know, a great presentation tonight. We really do value your expertise, and we're very lucky to have you, unfortunately. We won't be looking at the same face next year, but I'm sure we'll have someone who's equally qualified. It was exciting to see some of the projects that we'll be looking forward to, the steering projects. I'm on that committee, and it's been wonderful to work with you and Jackie and Dr. Hatter and our outside vendors. We've had some great projects in the past. And as far as the high school gym, and we look forward to the air conditioning, that's going to be coming this summer. So thank you for keeping us fiscally responsible and able to implement those projects. And to piggyback off of my colleagues, Lisa Rol did announce that we do have three positions up for board trustee in May. I am one of those seats. I will be running again for another term, and I would be happy to serve with the same commitment to and passion for education that I've served in the past two terms that I've been here. So please come out and vote in May for the budget and for the three seats that will be up.
Terrific. Pete, I got you. All right, so then it's Anthony? Good? Okay. So I just want to thank the administration for their hard work on the budget. You know, you spent 15 minutes giving us a presentation, and we know you've spent weeks and months putting it together. So we appreciate all your work, all of your department's work, and all the work of all the schools and all the departments that put in the numbers and the time and the effort to create this. And Ron, we thank you for your leadership in doing this. So I'm just happy we're moving forward. So thank you all. Ron, thank you for your explanation of books and the masks. And, you know, we look forward to the time we can see the kids' beautiful faces again, and hopefully it will come soon. And we're just waiting for the governor to give us an answer. So thank you. We are up to our second public comment. Our second public comment is a 30 minutes in length, and each person will have the opportunity to speak to up to three minutes. We may choose as a board to extend the second public comment by a majority vote if there are more people or time exceeds 30 minutes. I am going to read again the rules for public comment. Although the state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for our community members to hear about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. The speakers were asked to sign up on the appropriate signup sheets with their full name. If your name is not legible enough that we can read it, we cannot call on you. Please address all your comments directly to the board, not to the audience. Our policy 1230 clearly states, we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption, will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn your microphone off. It looks like we have 10 people signed up. I will start the call. Jeremy Neuberger.
Good evening, Yorktown Board of Education. My name is Jeremy Neuberger. I'm a Yorktown parent. I have two kids in the district. Both of them, if you will indulge a father's bragging, just made the principal's list. So proud dad. I'm here to talk to you about book banning. Little history. Back in 1933, in Germany, the Nazis burned and banned books that they determined un-German. Books by philosophers, poets, scientists, and Jewish authors. The books were called degenerate. The Nazis didn't like the views of others, so they banned them. There's a great book on the subject called Mouse. I highly recommend it. And ironically, there's a movement that is trying to ban it right now. Here and now, in our little town of Yorktown, books by black authors, Latina authors, LGBTQ authors are at threat of being banned. I know that you, the board, are reviewing them. These are books curated by our high school librarians, deemed valuable and with educational merit. These books today are also being called degenerate. In one hyperbolic Facebook post I saw, the words pornographic, cop-killing, sex-deviant, child porn. Folks, this is hysterical partisan nonsense. Listen, I'm a political guy. I have strong opinions on social media. But you know, one of the things that I really love about Yorktown School District is that they keep the politics out. We have people in our town with differing political views, but for the sake of our kids, the district keeps the partisan craziness of cable news and Twitter and Facebook groups outside the school walls. The focus is on educating our children, preparing them for college. No matter your political stripes in Yorktown, you should applaud that. I applaud that. And in my home, we have an open book policy. We encourage opening books. And when my daughter read The Hate U Give, a book by Angie Thomas on this book ban review list that we're here talking about, she loved it. It inspired her in a way a book can and should. She did not then decide to hate police after reading it. That's absurd. She learned a perspective of people that feel unfairly targeted by police, and she learned empathy. Give our kids some credit. They're bright. Let them read varying perspectives. When you review the books on this list, you'll see they do not match the inflammatory rhetoric being lied about by the latest political ban campaign. Make no mistake, it's a campaign. This is not some random Yorktown parent stumbling upon a book in the library and saying, let's review it. There's a movement to ban and burn, and it's partisan, and it's ugly. The remedy for knowing that these books are not what they accused of is to read them. So I thank you, and I hope that you'll review the books. Let's not ban books, let's read books.
Thank you. Jenna Jaramillo?
First, thank you so much for the thorough information earlier. I'm also speaking about the books under review. When we read books, we immerse ourselves in the story. We relate to the characters or the situations and see ourselves reflected back to us. And we feel connected. And sometimes we don't relate, and those stories are filled with ease or adversity we have not experienced. And the differences that are described are interesting, and they're sometimes uncomfortable. And in those characters and situations, we learn something. All of this magic depends on the author's impeccable use of words in describing imperfect human beings in an imperfect world. And all of this magic is inside every cover on a library shelf. Recreational reading is the biggest goal educators have for their students. So much can be learned in a book. My understanding is that many of the books under review are books about queer youth and youth of color. So in this, what feels like a never-ending pandemic, in the third year of isolation and social distancing and disrupted connection and societal chasms, we're pulling these books for review. These books within which are students who may feel they are on the social fringe, learning about themselves and their identity and how they fit and who they are, these books can give them an opportunity to see themselves and feel like they are not so alone. These books give these kids a way to connect with themselves or read in solidarity with others. In books, there is power. I am reflected, I matter, I belong. And so do you. In an age when mental health is so fragile, keep the books in the library and provide the opportunity for these kids to learn through the stories. These books may not be for everyone, but that's the great thing about keeping them in the library. They are for someone. And the fact that we're here, standing up and speaking about the need for books to remain available to students, is honestly preposterous. We're not giving the students nearly enough credit to make their own choices about what they need and what they want in education. And, I'm sorry, about what they want or need. And in education, they need it all at their fingertips to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Sweeney?
My name is Matt Sweeney. I would like to thank the committee for letting me speak this evening. I am here as a concerned parent. As a parent, my main goal is to make sure my children's childhood is or was better than my own. Unfortunately, due to COVID, so far, that goal is failing. Our children are required to wear masks all day, stay six feet apart, even during lunch. Most kids sit back to back. As Dr. Hatter spoke about, the ventilation systems being great, in my son's class in Mohansick, the windows are open and the AC is running in the middle of winter. In gym class, performing physical activity with masks, in my opinion, this is child abuse. The schools are now making up their own guidelines. My son doesn't know what his friends or his teachers look like. My son is borderline spectrum. He didn't start to talk until three and a half years old and has enough challenges. Other states are lifting these mask mandates as ours continues to fight for the control. The science doesn't support this. Children need to build up their immunities. We have complied. We have done everything the government, the state, and the district has asked, but enough is enough. We are destroying the best times of these kids' lives. I am asking to please give our children the same freedoms we had. No masks, no windows, and ACs running in winter, and being able to socialize and sit together in class and in the cafeteria. I came to this community to start a family and to give the best opportunity to my children. If things do not change, then I will find a state that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Frederick?
Good evening, Rachel Frederick. I'd like to comment on the current issue regarding the complaints about curricula or instructional materials regulation. According to YCSD's policy 1420R, there is no mention of books under review being pulled off library shelves. Admin stated that the reason they're pulled is because there's only one copy available to be reviewed by the committee. Yet another admin stated that these books are being housed in his office while under review. How can the committee be reading them while they're simultaneously in his office? Nevertheless, I did a quick search of the Westchester Public Library system to see if we can get more books into the hands of committee members for a more expeditious review process. Currently available, Out of Darkness, 12 copies, Beyond Magenta, 17 copies, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, nine copies, The Hate U Give, 79 copies, Gender Queer, three copies, All Boys Aren't Blue, 25 copies, The Bluest Eye, 102 copies. These do not include books on tape or the possibility for e-readers. In that same YCSD policy 1420R, there's reference to the Peacock case. 35 years ago, 1982, the Supreme Court of the United States heard arguments in the only case to involve censorship in school libraries. This case was initiated because of a conservative activist group, Parents of New York United, Pony U. They compiled a list of books that they wished to have removed from school libraries. The titles included Slaughterhouse Five, The Naked Eight, Down These Mean Streets, Best Short Stories of Negro Writers, Go Ask Alice, Laughing Boy, Black Boy, A Hero Ain't Nothing But a Sandwich, Soul on Ice, A Reader for Writers, and The Fixer. Obviously, history is repeating itself, with conservative political operatives attempting to censor access to material regarding race and racism yet again, and now LGBTQ plus content also. The outcome of that case determined that schools can remove materials deemed educationally unsuitable or pervasively vulgar. School boards cannot impede student rights just because they object to a certain viewpoint or idea. I would argue that non-required reading, of which there seems to be only one copy, would be impossible to classify as pervasive. And most importantly, if the decision lands in your hands, I would ask that you follow the guidance of the decision of the courts that school boards cannot impede student rights just because they object to a certain viewpoint or idea. NISED has issued guidance regarding intellectual freedom. It reads, "One would think that any environment of teaching and learning, especially one where inquiry and independent reading are promoted..."
10 seconds.
"...would naturally foster intellectual freedom. I appreciate the sentiment of approved policy guiding the process for review and being responsive to..."
Your time is up. Thank you. Meg Michalak?
Hello, my name is Meg Maholik. I have three children in the district. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I have decided to do so because it has come to my attention that people feel the books that are under review in our school library due to the book's content is wrong. I want to make it clear that this is not about homophobia, transphobic, or anything anti-anything. This is about books being reviewed because books in question should not be acceptable to minors in public or middle school. I'm not okay with books being banned, but this is not a banning issue, but more about an inappropriate content and rating issue for our youth and exposing them to content they are not ready for. This is an issue to me because in my family, I'm open. I want to speak to my children, but if they're looking at books that I don't understand or they don't understand, I'd like to have that conversation with them. I was raised in a very open, sorry, it upsets me a lot because this town is very divided on situations. We're throwing things back and forth on Facebook and not having conversations in person because we're afraid of being told we're transphobic, homophobic, racist. Everything's divided. I moved here from Yonkers, and there was more tolerance there than there is here. The only reason I moved here is because I wanted a proper education, a well-rounded education for my children. I didn't come here for division. My children need to learn everything on a broad spectrum, but at age-appropriate levels. I don't think my five-year-old or my 11-year-old, even my eight-year-old, are ready for that. I'd like to have an open conversation with them, and I just wanted to make it clear that I'd want this community to come together, not divided any longer. I've seen some crazy things said to each other on their soapboxes. Let's have conversations with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Stallings?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Gary Stallings. I've been teaching medical students about LGBTQ topics for the last 13 years at New York Med down in Valhalla. More importantly, I have two kids in this lovely school district. When my friends told me about this meeting and the books that are under review, I decided I needed to read the books because I wanted to form my own opinion about these books. So yesterday and this morning, I read Gender Queer. So I'm only going to talk about that book because I haven't read the other ones to make an opinion. I found the work to be well-written. It touches on topics that I know from teaching it to doctors are very, very difficult, and for taking care of patients that have tried to kill themselves because they had nothing to relate to growing up. And to know that the book is there for someone who needs it. Yes, there are some pictures that some parents might not appreciate for younger children. I'm okay with that. But the work in its entirety, to me, covered essential topics that someone who's struggling would benefit from greatly. And as it is now, the mental health statistics for LGBTQ plus, people are at least twice as bad as for everybody else. To the tune of, youth have a 39% chance of thinking about killing themselves in that group versus 18% for all the other youth. That is... That is huge. The third-leading cause of death for youth in this country is suicide. To have a book, one copy in this case, available for someone who needs it, despite some words and a couple pictures that we don’t always appreciate, I think it’s worth that cost so that person can have something to relate to and hopefully stay well and grow up to be an adult with their own kids, maybe even in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Stavens.
I’m Judith Stavens. I want to say, uh, oh, for short people? Is that better? Okay, great. Thank you for noticing that. I’m Judith Stavens. First of all, on an entirely separate topic, thank you so much to Mr. Cole and all the people who have worked on the budget in this town and our very solid fiscal standings. It is much appreciated. I want to thank Dr. Hatter and the board members for all of your hard work and for allowing this forum for the public to express our concerns. We understand it’s not required. I am a 26-year resident of Yorktown. My son attended Yorktown schools from kindergarten through this one. I was extremely distressed to hear about the books being challenged and removed from our very own high school library, right here in Yorktown. Even without having seen a full list of the books in question, I know that I adamantly do not want any of them removed from the library shelves. I have faith in the knowledge and experience of our dedicated education professionals. While someone may not want their children to read a particular book that does not give them the right to prevent all students from having access to it, we know that books about gender issues and by people of color are being targeted. As I’m sure you’re aware, books about LGBTQ+ experiences in particular, as we’ve just heard, can quite literally save lives. Books from a Black perspective, especially from a Pulitzer Prize-winning author, are essential to the E-steam initiative that we are rightly so proud of in this district. I have read Sections 1420 and 1420R of the policy handbook. I hope that the books in question will remain available to students while a determination is being made. I’m very concerned about that. I also respectfully request that this process be made transparent to the community. People such as myself, a district taxpayer and the parent of an alumnus, deserve clear and frequent communication. Shining a light on the process can be an important tool for us to support the district. My asks are that the district start with making public the list of books being challenged. Next, please communicate the process and expected timeline to the community. Most importantly, please make sure that these books are not removed from the library during the review process. It would be a rare book indeed that wouldn’t be available to the review committee members from another source, and we have had that information provided as well. With what is going on in our country right now, I am also concerned about the reputation of our fine school district. Do we want to be known for removing objectionable books from school libraries? Or do we want to be known as a community that welcomes and supports all students? I believe that you will find that the great majority of our neighbors support our educational professionals and have faith in their expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Schmidt-Fetterer.
Can you hear me okay? I also want to thank the board for your, your time, your hard work. Mr. Cole, I know budget especially is not the most glamorous part of our work, but it’s so important, and we’re so grateful for the fiscal responsibility of this, of this wonderful board. I was disappointed when I discovered via social media that Yorktown administrators had pulled some library books from the shelves to review for possible permanent removal. A list of seven books was circulated, but I do not know if that is an accurate list. So this leads to a few questions, and I know the board cannot answer questions tonight, but I’m sure that parents and guardians in our district would appreciate answers to these questions. First of all, how are we to be notified if books are under review for removal? Are we, as parents and guardians, allowed to know what the complaint is for each book? Who is on the committee that makes these decisions? And are parents part of that committee? And if so, how do parents apply to be part of this committee? You mentioned that there are just, there were only single copies of these books, and for that reason, they were pulled from the shelves. But if you were given an offer of a second set of books for the library, would the school district accept it? Because that offer is on the table from my husband and myself. What’s sad to me is that I honestly don’t believe people in this community suddenly realize they had concerns with these particular books. But instead, this is part of a national initiative which is meant to suppress honest discussion and knowledge of experience surrounding sex, domestic violence, toxic masculinity, racism, bigotry. As I have stated at this microphone before, I strongly believe that knowledge is power and that high school students, this is high school students, these are high school books, and our high school students are smart enough and sufficiently capable and independent in thought to be able to read a book and come to their own conclusions without immediately needing, needing to, 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 to have the same experiences as those in the books. I have not read these books, but I did take the time to research each book a bit, read the reviews and the synopsis to better understand the themes, language, and actions represented. The themes of these books seem to have something in common: the longing to be seen, to belong, to be understood, and to have rights, and to be protected. And though some of these books have sexual content that may not be appropriate for someone under the high school age, we’re fooling ourselves to think that our high school students are not familiar with these themes. The last thing I want to say is, in the end, I’m grateful to those who brought these books to our attention, because now I have a wonderful reading list for myself and my family.
Thank you. Andrew Maxwell.
It’s nice to see you all, and I just want to tell you I appreciate everything that you do for all of our children. Sure. The thing is, is I’m here because I’ve seen a lot of things happen in this school district since my children have been here, and I’m very concerned. Very concerned that we don’t hear what’s going on when things are negative. Very concerned that I hear it from my children, and they know what’s happening, yet I get nothing from the school of incidents that take place. Whether it’s a teacher hitting a student, who’s then fired, whether it’s another teacher touching the children inappropriately, whether it’s a fight on your school grounds or close to them. And I don’t know why that is. I, I, I get the emails about Snapchat, and the kids are doing things in the bathroom, and we have to watch that. I get the emails about the things on Snapchat to watch out for the teachers because they’re doing things. But what about everything else? Why is it that I know that you know what’s going on, yet you’re not informing us? Why is it that when I call the police department and I ask them, they know? They know that you know, and we’re still not getting the information? I think that’s crazy. You know, because I love our community, and I think our schools are exceptionally great. But I think that you should see the good and the bad. This way, as parents, we could be here to support and teach our kids what is right, what is wrong, and what to do in these instances. And I just don’t understand why we’re missing so much. And I, I love to hear about the buses and the work and, and the gym, and that’s wonderful. But what about everything else? You know, why is it that my daughter knows she could go, or her friends could go and buy vape pens and weed in the high school? Do you guys know that? Why, why don’t we know that? Why is it that my children know there was a fight with a knife involved? Don’t you think that’s something the community should know about for the safety of our children? Why is it that I have to go to the police department and speak to them and find things out? And then, you know, when there’s something inappropriate with a teacher, you get a letter that says they didn’t violate the code of conduct. Are you kidding me? They touched a child inappropriately and they didn’t violate your code of conduct? But when a child does it, they’re going to be expelled? So I hope in the future, things are a lot more transparent. And if anybody would like to speak to me about these incidents personally, because I have all of the information on it, I will be more than happy to say it, because I don’t want to, you know, say things I’m not supposed to hear. So thank you for listening to me and your time.
Thank you.
I’m going to be editing as I speak, because so many of my comments have already been addressed, and I don’t want to waste people’s time. But I am here today to address the recent brouhaha regarding censorship and books being removed from the YCSD. First, let me commend Dr. Hatter and the district and the board for following a clear and straightforward policy regarding the review of challenged books. I appreciate that. Second, let me now challenge a portion of said policy. I understand that a book under review is not banned, thank goodness. However, if a book is challenged, it should remain available to our students during its review process. If there is only one copy of the challenged book, the board should purchase another for review. Amazon has overnight delivery. We can do this. We’re not a poor district. We can afford another book. If the challenged book is legitimately found offensive, which I personally find hard to believe, fine. Remove it from our school library, donate it, or both copies, to the John C. Hart Library. I’m sure they would be proud to accept it and add to their banned book display. More fundamentally, I would like to address the book review process at its core. While I understand that there are texts which offend certain parents, I have to ask the following: so what? Who gets to decide what’s offensive? Who chooses what content violates this or that tenet of our community’s values? Personally, I am deeply offended by the sexist, misogynist, white supremacist, Christian nationalism I see rampant in media all over the place. This does not give me license to ban the traitorous Confederate flag or the insurrectionist Stop the Steal nonsense. People can say what they will, and I have the right to argue. No one can say, “You can’t say that,” and no one has the right to deny another person’s child the right to read whatever they wish. Keep your religion out of my child’s education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have reached the end of public comment, so I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.